All right. We ready?
Yup.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February seventh, second, excuse me, Board of Ed meeting. Uh, this is all virtual tonight. There's no one in the board office due to the weather. We welcome you and we hope everyone is safe. And as we start the meeting, roll call, Mrs. Slunt.
Dr. Cordellino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Dr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Joe?
Here.
Mrs. Rossinow?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, would everyone please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing at the conclusion of the Pledge of Allegiance for a moment of silence. As you know, we had a student at Monville High School recently passed away. So we would like to honor by a moment of silence, please. So if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mrs. Slunt, the Sunshine Law, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Monville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Monville Township Municipal Building, all Monville Public Schools, the Monville Public Library, the Monville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Christine. All right, uh, who would like to go first tonight? Elliot or Natalie?
I'm going first tonight.
Okay, and Natalie, go.
So there are, for athletics, there's finally some games and athletics to be reported with the start of winter sports. So for girls' basketball, they have a record of two and one with wins against Mountain Lakes and Morristown. Senior captains Bella Vito and Danny Vino have consistently led the team with points and rebounds, and their standings are second in the American and Jack Conference. And their senior night is this Thursday, February fourth, at four o'clock. For boys' basketball, they have a record of one and one with a fifty-five to forty-seven win against Morristown. And their next game is tomorrow, February third, home versus Morris Knolls at four o'clock. The bowling team is currently undefeated with wins against Chatham and Morris Hills, and those wins were seven and oh, clean sweeps at both matches. Their next match is this Thursday, February fourth, versus Morris County School of Technology. And ice hockey has a record of one and oh with a three and one win over Fairlon. Swimming and track and field were scheduled to start practices on February first. However, due to the snow, their first practices were delayed till later this week. Volleyball and wrestling are scheduled to start on March first. And in terms of spring sports, boys tennis is projected to start on March twenty-sixth, with golf and all other spring sports starting on April first. And just a reminder that all MTHS home games are streamed live on the NFHS Network due to the limited in-person attendance, and the clear feed and score is streamed, and the link for the live streams are found on the NFHS Network.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Any questions of Natalie? Thank you again, Natalie. Elliot?
All right, I'm gonna do the, the clubs and other stuff. Um, so in terms of past news, uh, on January twenty-first at seven o'clock, the MTHS Department of School Counseling presented Screen Time and Tech Addiction during COVID and Beyond. This was a virtual event conducted over Zoom. Criminal history students at MTHS invited Monville School Resource Officer, Detective McGowan, and retired detective of Newark Police Department Anthony Youngello to their class on Friday, January fifteenth. The special guests met with students and teachers virtually, uh, and answered their questions, uh, over, uh, the meeting. And the MTHS forensics team competed at Ridge Invitational this past weekend, and Monville won their first overall, so congratulations. And in terms of the future, uh, MTH, uh, MTHS FBLA will be hosting its first annual Jeopardy tournament Wednesday, February seventeenth at twelve o'clock. Interested students can register through Friday, February twelfth via the link in the announcements. The MTHS Theater Company announced their spring musical Bright Star. Uh, additions are taking place this week. More information about the musical can be found on the theater company's website. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February third, there will be a virtual incoming student orientation at seven o'clock. This is for eighth grade students, then others who will be, uh, entering MTHS in the fall, and incoming students will get their first glimpse into the high school life at MTHS. And, um, lastly, the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-One seniors are encouraged to check on the Grade Twelve, uh, Schoology page and click on the local scholarship classroom to see if there's any scholarships that they qualify and are interested in applying for. I think most of those dates, um, or due dates are in March.
Thank you, Elliot. Any questions for Elliot? Comprehensive report. Thank you very much, Elliot. Uh, Mr. Palmer, I'm gonna have to step out for a few minutes. Could you please continue with the agenda? I would appreciate it.
Certainly. Okay, um, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Roftar?
Hi, we do have, um, the, uh, item on the board agenda with regard to Cedar Hill achieving State School of Character designation for, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Woodmont School also received this designation, and both schools will now be continuing on to, uh, compete for the National School of Character recognition, and we have, uh, every hall of that designation will also be awarded to both of those schools. So congratulations. It's a tremendous amount of work to prepare those applications. Uh, and it really is a, a team effort with regard to students, parents, and staff members at the school that actually do all of the right things that enable the schools to achieve that designation of a state school of character. So again, congratulations to Cedar Hill and Woodmont Schools. Uh, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Roftar. Business Administrators Report, Mrs. Slunt.
I have no report.
Okay, uh, Committee Reports. Finance Facilities, Dr. Cordellino.
Uh, thank you, Mike. Uh, the committee met on January nineteenth. Uh, the district is facing some challenges closing out the year and building a budget for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two as a result of reduction in state aid, additional costs incurred due to the COVID pandemic, and changes in health benefits. But, uh, Christine is really doing a wonderful job, um, in closing out this year and beginning to put together next year's, uh, budget. She's, uh, working on containing costs. And the committee will begin to review all areas of the proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget, starting on February fourth, when the, um, committee will meet again.
Thank, thank you. Curriculum, David. You're muted, Dave. David, can you hear me? You're muted. Okay, we'll get back to David. Um, Policy Personnel, Christine.
Hi, Mike. I have no report.
Communications, Michelle?
No report.
Safety and Security, Michael.
Yes, we met, uh, earlier today, uh, before this meeting. Um, and we met with, um, Thomas and Detective McGowan over, uh, quite a few things. So I'll just hit some of the highlights, uh, that we talked about. The first is, um, uh, new intercom systems and clocks that are being installed. A lot of the schools have the new intercom clocks set up. So there's, uh, a few elementary schools that, um, still to get some work done to complete it, but that's gonna be scheduled, uh, within the next year. Along with the, uh, communication types, there's external horns, uh, being installed around the schools so that people who are maybe out on ground can hear announcements or emergency, uh, notifications if necessary. And, and along with that, there's also speakers being installed in the bathrooms. So again, people can hear emergency announcements that, uh, that may come up. Next, though, in, in the gym at the various schools, uh, their, uh, PA systems that are used in those environments are gonna be, um, uh, overridden, uh, when emergency intercom does come, come through. So that allows the, uh, someone who may be playing a lot of music in the gym, whether they're doing, uh, some other uh, where that music will cut off, and then they can be able to hear the announcement, uh, in case the, it's necessary. After incomes, uh, was, uh, the various security cameras, uh, there's a lot of old cameras that were in our various schools, and, uh, we're replacing them with, with close to three hundred new cameras to provide, uh, higher quality, uh, images of, uh, in the public spaces of our schools and to cover the entrances of, of all the schools. Um, so if any issues come up with that, it is, uh, is, is available. Next, we talked about, uh, having an alarm system for, uh, the police. Whereas today, i- in, in all the public buildings, you have the red pull, pull, uh, uh, trigger, or whatever, for the fire. Uh, there, in all of the administrative offices at schools, there is now a blue pull, uh, alarm, exactly the same as, as the fire, but that is a direct link to the police department, uh, to, to provide, uh, faster, hopefully faster access and, and, uh, in case of any emergencies. And a- as if that works, and it works out well, uh, they're gonna expand that to include more of those, these blue alarms in strategic places around, uh, the various buildings to provide, uh, access, and people can, can pull that alarm if, if necessary. Uh, we also talked about, uh, cybersecurity, and, uh, there's a lot of things going on there about, uh, blocking, uh, malicious content and, and phishing emails, and a lot of, uh, attempts to, to break into the systems, and it happens all over, all over the world. And, um, and Austin's doing a great job at, at getting our cybersecurity, uh, and keeping it up to date. Then, uh, Officer McGowan, uh, gave us a quick update on what he's working on with the, uh, as part of the SRO. Um, so a couple of things that he's working on, uh, the first is for the fifth grade, uh, program, the LEED program. Uh, that's a ten-week program that, that he, uh, is, is really enjoying working with the kids and, um, on the, on presenting to the kids, and that's the, the law enforcement against drugs, uh, that's the LEED program. Uh, he's also, uh, uh, working with the, the Safe Driving Program, and this is, uh, primarily, uh, a, a program to to give into the high school students, uh, before they're allowed to park on campus, before they can get their, uh, authorization to, to park on campus, they have to attend the, the Safe Driving Program. Uh, he's also, uh, looking to start up a, a newer program, uh, where he wants to reward, um, positive behavior by the, the students. So if, if someone is wearing their seatbelt on the bus, they may get a, a coupon from a local business for a free slice of pizza or a drink or something like that, but he's looking for ways to, um, uh, reinforce positive behaviors of, of, of safety on campus, and whether it's wearing a seatbelt or, or driving appropriately on the road or doing other things as, as identified. So he's working on that, this, uh, this program. It's, it's, it doesn't have a but, uh, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a nice program to, to, again, to, to reward, uh, positive, uh, positive student behavior. And, um, lastly, he also wanted to mention that, uh, since he's been, uh, the SRO for a few years now, uh, a lot of the students have become very comfortable with him, and they're using him as an unofficial mentor, and he really loves that aspect of his job, being able to walk the hallways in, in almost schools now, and there are some student who, uh, comes up to him and asks his advice or, or uh, just wants to talk about various, uh, various issues, and, uh, he just really loved that, uh, that aspect of his job of, of being that mentor. Um, and that's, that's it. That's, that's everything that we talked about in the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappaport. Uh, Mr. Grau, did you want to take over?
No, finish your committee mics.
Can I, can I ask a question of Mike?
Fire away.
Thanks. On all the upgrades that are happening around the various schools, uh, Mike, uh, is that part of a, a security plan, or were they brought to us by administration?
Renee, do you wanna chime in that?
Most of the recommendations really have come, uh, through, uh, Austin. Uh, I know he's worked closely with regard to both the, the budgeting aspect of that and, um, you know, the connecting facility needs as well. So we are blessed to have someone of Austin's caliber, uh, kind of coordinating all of those aspects for us. He does a wonderful job.
Uh, thank you. And I agree about Austin.
Yeah, as well as Officer McGowan.
As well as Officer McGowan, correct.
Right. Karen, Officer Liaisons, uh, NJ SBA.
NJ SBA, sure. Uh, so the Executive Committee met, uh, virtually on January twelfth. Um, just to do a couple of legislative highlights, um, the, um, the legislature is going to require the Commissioner of Education to prepare two reports on the impact of COVID uh, on public schools. The first report would be a learning loss report that would identify and quantify the impact of COVID nineteen public, uh, on COVID nineteen's effect on student academic outcomes. And the second would be a report on the continuation of school services during the same period. So those are, um, those are actually bills which we presume will wind their way, uh, to the Governor's Desk. There are also five bills moving along, uh, that would enhance, uh, support for mental health. As we all know, the federal government passed the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and out of that, one point two billion dollars has been slated for New Jersey. So we'll, we'll see, um, you know, how that's, uh, eventually divided up among the districts. Um, the Governor will be doing a budget address on the twenty-third of this month. Um, there are a couple of COVID relief, uh, bills and laws, uh, that we already know about. So delaying the audit, delaying Q-SAC. There is a bill that would allow us to maintain a four percent surplus to provide school districts with some financial and budgetary flexibility, uh, as well as a li- uh, allow some line, line item transfers without, uh, Department of Education approval. Um, the, uh, last thing, uh, they, uh, NJ SBA will be rolling out online board member orientation for any new board members. And NJ SBA has prepared a sample resolution, um, for boards to request educators be given priority for vaccines. We are hoping to have that resolution on our next board meeting agenda so that we can discuss and vote on that. And that concludes my NJ SBA report.
Thank you. Morris County School Boards, Mr. O'Brien?
No report this time.
Uh, Morris County Educational Services, Mr. Rappaport?
We're meeting next week.
Thank you. DAC, that's me, no report. And, uh, Deflight Boosters, once again, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, the, uh, the Mustangs, the boosters, athletic boosters, uh, meet tomorrow night.
Okay. Elliot, Cedar Hill, Karen?
Uh, the home and school will meet tomorrow night.
Okay, Hildale, Mr. Grau?
No report.
Valley View, Mr. Daughtry?
No report.
William Mason, Mrs. Fano?
I've got a report. Um,
Fire away.
So the parents are very excited. Um, they're all planning the end-of-year activities. They understand that, you know, um, they're gonna have to wait and see, uh, but the parents are still planning lots of different, um, activities and alternatives for the children, especially the fifth graders, um, which, you know, they're very, very important. Um, they spoke, they're excited about the beautification project that's going to be occurring in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, they had questions about, you know, if there was going to be a standardized test. Um, and they were just really, they're not doing much, um, but they're planning behind the scenes, so, you know. That's it. But I will tell you, there was, again, another thirty parents on the Zoom call, and, uh, I was very excited, uh, for, uh, the parents and, um, the staff that was there. Normally, they don't only get a handful of folks, so I'm, I'm very happy for all of them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Woodmont, that is me, and no report. Lazar, that's either David Modrak or Michael Rappaport.
Well, they haven't met yet. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mike, David.
Okay, great. So, um, yeah, so they have not met recently, however, uh, coming up tomorrow night is the eighth grade virtual high school orientation at seven o'clock, which is important for the eighth graders. Um, and I also want to just go back real quick and say no report for curriculum and instruction.
Sorry, I didn't say that.
That's okay. I was just having all types of technical issues tonight.
Yeah, David, as long as I have you on the horn, anything for curriculum?
No, no report.
Okay, uh, high school, Michelle, Michael Bryan?
Uh, the PTC met, uh, virtually on the twentieth. Um, Mr. Sanford provided, um, a detailed, you know, update on, on things for parents. Answered a lot of questions. Um, the PTC reiterated that ongoing this year is the commemorative fifty-year, uh, spiritware sale that you could access through the PTC website. And the P, just kind of like Christine said, their PTC is looking to support, um, you know, year-end activities that they normally do, uh, in whatever capacity, you know, they'll be able to hold them, and things like the senior dessert feast, um, you know, support for graduation. Um, looking forward to doing some special things to thank the teachers, for teachers appreciation, and, um, just, just working towards all of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Negotiations, uh, Karen, MT, MTEA?
Uh, thanks, Mike. Um, so the Association and the Boards Committee, um, had a productive meeting on January twelfth where we exchanged proposals, and each side provided rationale for the items on the proposals. Um, we met again on the first. Um, again, it was a productive meeting. Uh, we signed off on a few items, and we're scheduled to meet again, I believe, on the ninth. Next Tuesday.
Thank you. Uh, Charlie, any of the other, uh, negotiating groups?
Yeah, I'll take the next two, and thank you for taking over, Mike, when I had to go out and make sure my driver looked out. Uh, negotiation to the administrators and the supervisors. We've given them the scattergram. We'll be meeting shortly with this weather. It's been pretty difficult. Then we'll meet to exchange proposals and, and send, set ground rules. Um, Section D, excuse me, Section H, public participation opportunity. Anybody ask questions about anything on the agenda that the Board is being asked to vote on now? I don't know, Christine, are you handling the questions, or is somebody, Renee?
And as I always do, if you're watching us on YouTube, there are instructions at the bottom of the page that will direct you to come and join us on the Zoom webinar. If you are in the Zoom webinar and you have a question that you'd like to ask or speak on any, uh, agenda-related items, if you would raise your hand, and I will recognize you. I do, I do not see any hands raised at the present time, Mr. Grau.
Okay, since there's no questions on the agenda items, I would entertain a motion to, for a motion to approve the, uh, agenda in total. 移到 Second?
Second.
All right, any questions on item I, the minutes? Nothing on J? Any questions on K, payment of bills? I notice we're not paying L? M? N? Is that it? No questions? I would like to thank, uh, Renee and Christine sending out the review and giving explanations to various topics that Board members of public may have questions on. I appreciate that. All right, Mrs. Slunt, may we have a roll call vote on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Abstain M dot two, yes to all else.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Uh, there's no reason to go into closed session that I'm aware of. Section Q, any old business? Section R, general board comment and new business. Next meeting is February the sixteenth. Public participation is an opportunity for the members of the public to ask any questions for any items that are not on the agenda. If you're called upon, please, we would appreciate you giving us your name and address, and I'll have to ask Renee to help me out here.
Uh, if you'd like to recognize, if you could, uh, raise your hand in the Zoom webinar, we will recognize you.
Any hands up, Renee?
Um, I do see an indication that there was a hand raised, but I, I can't tell who raised it.
Looks like, uh, Rachel Infasino.
Okay, uh, all right, Rachel Infasino.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, hello, everyone.
Speak up, Rachel.
I have a few questions, if that's okay. Um, first off, I just wanted to say thank you. Our children really enjoyed having a snow day this week as a, um, you know, as you know, we've had plenty of that for them to play in, so they were thrilled to have that. Um, I also want to say thank you for acknowledging, uh, of trying to move the virtual day, um, from Tuesday to Wednesday so we can have more in-person instruction. My question kind of is around that. I'm a little concerned about how much in-person time we've had since December. Um, so far this year, we've had a seven total in-person instruction days for elementary school. And my question is, um, uh, if there is inclement weather going forward, that's not on a Wednesday, are we going to look to switch the virtual day to improve the in-person instruction? And I know we've discussed this in the past about the And I know we've discussed this in the past about the holidays, but. On the weeks that we have holidays like President's Day or Good Friday. Or Memorial Day, are we going to look to possibly take the virtual days out of those weeks? So we can increase the number of in-person instruction days that we have had?
We're not looking to recommend any changes to the virtual Wednesday. That is a topic that we will be discussing with the administrative council. There are. There are some considerations between the elementary and middle and high school levels. The middle and high school levels with cohorts, we are focused on the deep cleaning, particularly between the cohorts. But again, it is a topic that we'll be discussing with the administrative council. But at the present time, I'm not recommending any changes to that schedule.
Okay, my next question, as I know that we are not looking to make an immediate change to the schedule and the phases that we are. Moving forward in. My question is, is the district drafting a plan for our 2021, 2022 school year? To overcome the lunch hurdle that we've had this year to ensure that we can provide our students with a full education next year? I understand it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. However, private schools and other districts in New Jersey have been able to maintain a full school day and as parents. We are concerned about the educational divide that continues to widen between the public schools and the private schools?
I I am not thoroughly convinced, entirely convinced that there are our students are. That far behind their peers. But we are just at the beginning stages of looking at what our plan for the. 2122 school year would look like. Certainly, we are very hopeful that the implementation of vaccines will improve. The situation in terms of staffing and what we're able to accomplish next year, but. I know I have received emails and other inquiries from parents with regard to. The coming school year and what September might look like. At the present time. There are just too many variables for us to commit definitively to what that that might look like.
Okay, and then my last question. Does the district intend to add two weeks of virtual learning post-spring break as done past the winter break? If so, could the district consider giving the families advance notice of this?
Right, that is certainly something that we we will be discussing. And you know, we do have a little bit of time before spring break arrives. So we will certainly try to provide. You know, advance notice to parents if the district decides to move in that direction.
Thank you.
Thanks, Renee. Anybody else have their hand up, Renee?
I'm having trouble, I mean, whoever, I'm having trouble seeing the hands.
Yeah, no other hands, Charlie, no other hands.
There's no other hands?
No.
Okay, since there's no other hands at this point. And there's nothing else that the board would like to discuss. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. O'Brien, was it?
Yes.
Tacking it by.
Second.
Mr. Palmer. Next meeting is February 16th. Hopefully we'll have some of us in the board office at that time. In the meantime, please be safe. And stay healthy. Motion to adjourn was made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. All have a safe evening.
And everybody.
Members and administrators.